And I will tell you some factors that you should consider when you are doing your studies or to have effective study session, the things you should consider. The first thing is to select the best place for studying. The alladhan no pay reading area kattina library kattina, oylanga patha patha sanamanan tina. Okay, so likewise you can go anywhere, any place and even there are some public libraries. Oy vate pite bolas kumma arahime tina public libraries. Ethu do yaata suit enathana kuyaa huvagannun. Sometimes you might live with your friends and they might be from different faculties and they might not have the exams according to your timetable. Can a faculty join a faculty as well at the timetable? Enna sinnanani. Ethukutha samaharita bodimay vaada padankaran na ethan pravunathak nathivethi neppurav. Then you can go to another place, you can go to a library or you can go to a park, whatever the place you like. Because some of us like to study alone. Kisima sadhyakna tuva, tamangkeva meesatyaani ethani dam padankranika thama samahara ekashtaili. That's why I told you to identify your uniqueness. Vaagisthen thari weakness thari mukakari ekka identify krakanki, menne meh meh decisions gandu vaadeka vedagattina. Samara innovaalata varadha taniyam padankaranuva, taniyam padankaranuva padankaraninai venamunharikarakaridi. Engisa varadhu group pack veerak kauharu ekane, arahundra relative enavakeenav, relative enavu group pack settenun. So if that is your style, you can use your boarding. Ekane group study akkana yaluuk vidharharyanna puligam hima devalkaranu puligam. So likewise, identify the best place for studying. Then the next main, the most important thing is keeping your phone aside. Ekane lamai dekapi, abhi okkuma meh phone salda vaalaki generation nekivava ma. Maathani vaalata vada ichchira meh lokku generation nekikkene, nekpodigappana tina apiyada. Thirapay apay unath meh, abhi okkuma na meh generation edam meh coviddekkika veditthila dinne. Kain smart phones, smart devices, Facebook, WhatsApp, all the usage of social media has drastically increased. Ekane then gudak, wise ka hatte pannapuaya, then WhatsApp tina, apiyam alapa jilada tina, patthamadha tina. Har devage meh gudak, then society kee avidhiru change lathina. Habei, padankranu velavata phone nekala kia karnika, thama distraction ka. Ekane then notification nekavat, dekara thama aakconcentration nekian. Thodu vaad padankranu velavata phone nekeli entiela tiana. Mama kianavala ekane padankranu velavakeenavala, thaya dekathune ekadikadu padankranianai pa. Mang eketh science topic methoddekkika kianam. Usually according to the research, the best time to have an effective study session is forty to fifty minutes. Ekadama meh schooli periodsle hima forty to fifty minutes tine ekai, ekane ekadu hetvattina. Even in Peradeni University Engineering Faculty, their period is four fifty five minutes. Varhe vishakasakari thanne, dekapi na ekka marakke hima nekine. But they have made a decision to have a session only for fifty five minutes. Got it? Evadithing reasons tiena, scientific, logical reasons tiena. Engisa oyalas study kanna kudda, vinadi panahakidra ekadikadu phoneu okkum pathakrittila ekadu concentrate karan. Inana vinadi pahakidra poli breakka, ragana ay studies continue karande. As an example, ekthanugavala meh attay udyaattay nan, ekthanu nivarudhavasakila. Udyaattay nan, name hari, attai panas pahav, hari attai pana hari venakam padankara. Ilangadha meh poli breakka kana ekko podavidilena, mammanam use story, dipsari manhari kana, exercises, exercise manhari karano. Likewise, you can do anything, you can drink coffee, hamvilaam vinadi dhanda, coffee bondne pa, cafe nichchira ekadani kichchira undanai. But you can drink water, have a walk, eliyata gila podak, Elia City, nalamara hari, Elia City narabandranathang. Meh, ethukutha then, thenadu phone nekara kana podak vinariyadhyat, podak serve kallari manhari karatara ekadu prashnannai. But again, when you are starting your study, again, just keep everything away and just concentrate. Varhe ekka concentrate karannathang vennilamai, varamukakkari unda, dhatu concentrate kala padankarunu, arah samavadinavakila kian, ekianameh unda. Dhatu meh ekadu concentrate kala innukutha, make it tangala, ek notification nekavagav, ekavalanikina. As ekavala ekamukakari kaknan, meh ay mulu concentration nekamai tenthamay aan. So make sure keep your phone aside and have study sessions of fifty to forty minutes. And also have a study plan, then vaaladhanuva. You will receive your academic calendars as well as sports calendars in advance. Semesters dekka kana, academic kia kana, ekke plans, minna midday midday exam, minna minna sessions, pahalava, sati pahalava. Study view, medain, medham, medada, exam tikka tine, medain, amedada, kila apita academic calendar khambeena. Then, why can't you plan academic calendar kaddeno? Minna medada meh ekati enni kila, urudhakri kalinkianu. Ethukuthi ting apita nekplan krakanti, apivika karannadi kani, aulathin. So students, when you receive your academic calendar, sport calendar and also when you are doing other extracurricular activities, you will plan things in advance, got it? So you can have a good study plan. Ekemonhari, think as this, if there are some clashes between your sports calendar and academic calendar, you can plan in advance in order to face them. Kalim padankala tiyaganu, okkuma hariyera plannekkakaragannu puligam. And you need to have short term plans as well as long term plans. Then vaaladhanuva middaykeenakila, thodu middayka samani, sati hatak, attack giyadu pasi middayakila. Try to score well in your continuous assessments and midday exams. Mukkuda endekadavada, endegar testene mulu subject okkuma pass peevsi, okkuma testene vane endekadu. But for the midday exam, only half of the syllabus or below the half. Ekane half samaharila bagirathadu indama middaykaratestend. Thodu middaykadi continuous assessments olda, group projects, group assignments, what, wedding, varal, lakumukannu puligam unath, you can go for a good grade. Endegar podak aduvunath, mukkuda endega thaya thuning hemadayama decide venan. But for the continuous assessment marks, it is a different story, it will be a different story. And these are some of the apps I am using to have a to-do list. Atham priority listath tienun, varadha hemadaama, ekana amuthakainu dekapi samaharisarunang meh poli notebookka tian liyagunav. So why should we do like that when we have the smartphones with us? Thodu varadu meevage apps tiena, even you can use Vibe, Vibe ekka ulidhak gila balaana, mind notes kila tiena, kene chat tech vake tiena. Then thunnang varadu daagannu puligam ekke, kewa daagannu puligam ekke, karim reminders daala, ekka, ekka karana, ekka mehama tick, mehama irakim kapaladhaan vidhihida optionne kuttiena. And also you can use Microsoft to-do. Mehke visheshatthi tienne, you can sync your laptop as well as the phone. Varadu laptoppeka mukakari, var laptoppeka use karakarini, mukakari reminder kaavatthari, meh vedikaranu tiena kilaavatthari. Varadu laptoppeka gila ekka type karan puligam, ekko auto phone nekada synckina. And it will be aduveraavun, if you use the phone, it will be synced to the laptop. So likewise, try to use these apps, even you can use reminders, alarms, daagannu puligam, priority karagannu puligam, mehka priority kaknan, mehka hemvilaam, dingfavi alarm yakvadina, mekva karannu, mekva karannu kila. So use these apps, okay? And try to have mind maps and short notes. Every time when you finish a session, try to develop a small short note. Short note tekkane pitupahakayak ekaknavi. Haridu, kene when you take a short note to your hand, you must be able to read it or look at it at a glance. Kene vaamehem balapuham mulu, mulu, ee sessionne kharii, mulu lessonne kakari, lesson thunakari summarizeina. Attha glance ekka balapuham vaadha recall karanukutha, then meh short note teka hadagannu samani, vaadha meh mulu subject teka ema big picture ka peenun. As an example, then ekthanugav, then api, yam kisi padamak karunukutha, ekka sessions pahalavat tiena kian. Ee sessions pahalave, then mehama pinturekki ekthanu, ee pinture pasalekki lagathut, ee pasaleke khaali khaali thama hemasati movaladu ugannan. Thodu sati pahalo yurunadu pasidamu, varam meh subjectteka mulu rupavada ki. Ami ke mehke nevillathine, mehke nehmege vennekeenaka, dakinne mulu sati pahalavu yurutam. Ethukuthu varadu study leave ka khambeena khalay, var short note stika hadagana ekane, va harari notes stika khadaagana, vaadha terenidin, notes stika khadaagana tipbut. Arah sati dekka study leave ka, thuruturo palavini davast dekathune, varadu meh mind mappeka create karanna sahina, passui, varadu overall idea ka tiena, kuthama mind mappeka create karan puligam. Yaapay gudak lamaitu venne, yaladu exam mekka kalindavasi thama mehka tereenya, mehke nehmege vennekeenaka. Ethukuthu arah varadu analyze karagana, tamange self-learning vade time mehka maadi. Engisa varadu dowasingdavas karakathu, study leave laam venukuthu, varadu meh mind mappeka hadagannu, lokku chansakath tiena. And these are some of the notes I created because in my first year, I tried to write the notes. But during my second year, I thought that, why should I write? I can type it and it will improve my typing speed and also since all the PPTs and PDFs are available, you can just copy and paste, ekane definition nekathibbu, varadu recommended reading bookkeen copy kala paste karan puligam. Now students, every and each course will have a recommended reading and your slides will be based on, most probably based on the recommended readings plus the knowledge of the lecture as well as the research conducted. Muyokkuma usually online PDF formatteka hari, PPT kian, PowerPoint, atham PDF formatteka hari, Word formatteka hari, mohana tiena. Thodu varadu meevage note tekkadevap karagannu puligam unath, it will be very easy and you will not misplace these notes. Varadu thas mehka unam printoutteka karagana, padankaranu puligam, atham lappeka kitiyagana, padankaranu puligam, ekke ekviyidilena. Madhural lappeka kitiyagana, padankranthiya kamav, thenam printouts karagana. I will try to study, this will save you lot of time if you can make like this. Sometimes this might not be your way. Samahara ekkarnuva, site teka karagana, site teka meh hematanai mekke kewa, amunila, ekke ekka partingliyagana, padankarunu. It's also good, that's your method. Ekko aagikramenam, do it, continue it, no problem. If it is working, continue it, if it is not working, there is a problem, there definitely change. Mukakari ekka, ekane varam, varam isalakivavage, varam thama denagannun, varam thama analyze kala balannun, pohedamata kelavennige. Ethukuthu vaay pointe ka dananuva nam, get rid of that, get rid of that. So we'll move on. So this is one of the short notes that I prepared when I was studying. And always try to track your progress. Ekane then vaad padankaratavada ne, payagannam padankarakila vaage tiena, vaage direct hari, mukakari, minna mitcharamam padankarakila tiena. But it should be effective. Payadikak padankalae, ekka lessonne kakpa thivarakaragannu beruvunath, there is no progress. Some of the lessons you are learning might need to give more time compared to others, even some subjects. Samara subjects tiena, varadhanu subject pahak tienano semesterkada, dekakidra varadu shape. Ekane varadu ekka kemati hari, varadhanu ahali, hari professional qualificationnekkva varadu kalinkaradina. Hari varay interested, hari varay ekka lecturesari gila tiena, hari mukakari hetvak, engisa varadu subjects dekka varadu shape pennun. Ethukuthu lesiva ekmantivare karala, time mehki thuru karagannu baland, arah amaru yadu vedit time nekathendu. Even in the exam, you can do that. Okay, every time try to finish the easiest questions first and try to finish the easiest and the questions with highest marks. Ekane vaahitthanuga lesis karaprashnat tienava, ekka lakunu dhayath kinni, thattrakala, yelte yurakkaru. Habei ekka lesuvunupaliyute, ekka lakunu dekainan denne, no point of spending much time. Va ekane gudak, devadhanuva thama, evanvaru lakunu dekaini tienne, ethukuthu ekka shapekei lakunu dekakata harianu, liyala, ani prashtriyana. Likewise, now. And next one is to have a good sleep. Have to have a good sleep. If you are not having a good sleep, that will be a problem for your sports studies, extracurricular activities as well as your health. I will just explain the science behind this. Apita ekane, nitimata enne melatonin kena hormone nekakkinda. This melatonin hormone will be secreted by our brain, there is a separate gland for that and it usually secretes around 10 PM, meh visi dekakianne twenty-four hours sinthi enne. 10 PM valadu thama secretion nekavadivme. Thodu mehka meh minna meh matthamitekutha, apru nikamaninthanavake, arah api, hondatam inthaagannu velavatam minna mehvela. Samani average person kene, kane average, exceptional cases tiena, samaharainna, davaldhre niddiyagana, arah meh vaulavage, raataharla davaldhre idhaagana, nisacharadu kila, nisamaharainna. Okay, so likewise, and when the sun rises, this hormone will go down. Kene paha, paha vidharuvanukutha, ekka bahaganaanuva, irailiya dakkinukutha, ekka aduvendu thama, ekka thama api, issavana rakhali thama, minissung, threata nindha andh, hetu thama meh melatonin kena hormone. Ethodu varas, varas study sessionneka plan karagannukuthu, var balannun, minna mehka allala, attha harla padankarakan. Ekku varaya padankarananam, upparime ekkulhadakka vitrap padankaranai, avudhe negitila padankarnekaneknang, pahat negitila continue karnekai thamaai, the best option according to science. Habei, samaharainna puligam, exceptional cases, varadu dekathunavitrananam, padankala, attaivitrananam, buddhianu puligam, ayat tiena, mitanaththati hemai. Yalav aagikrami ekkanam, don't try to change it. Ekko aagikramenam, ekka varadu vedakarunanam, then mukkuda varala, ee level karala, olial karala, okkuma karala, nevilaiyini. So if that is your method, continue it. If it is not working, think about this one also, okay? And about the healthy lifestyle. Varadu campusveka avaham, apiy okkuma, ekkana khanekadu vedhi priorityke duunath, khanda kemi thigodam, telahar, seniori hem. Kene kottukharu, raisakharu, mukakari tagala, meh khanda thama apiyasa. But the consequences are very high. Ekane then mama dananu, mageme alu inna, apay vayasa then, vissi attakidra inna inna, ethude varadu meh diabetes tiena. E hetu api campusse kedi, vedhi hitannu, doh, kokagola, hemabila, spikebila, hemahemah meh vedhi hitannu, mukkuda api hitannu, api tharunni sa, apita keetcharam evene nathivethi kila. But if our intake is greater than our output, ekane apay metabolisme kada awashka calories, apiy unavada vada gathut, excess calories tiena. Thodu excess calories, apita haridu burn karagana, beruvunam, it will be a problem. Now even for me, now I have done two or three sports continuously for years. Then ethukuthu mama poddhanavathukuvang, mageme gain vena vedhi effects. Thodu mama denagannun, nekoma the diet karanni, ekka burn karaganni, nekoma dehemakila. Eva game varalavandra, vatru, bonnamathakatiyagaanu meva, then varalhitai meva, chara vedagat nathivaidh, thanne nekila. But when you are balancing your life, you should have it. Why we are think like this, ai, ai api meh hondha degreeak karagana, hondha graduate kenek pennun balanni, hondra jivaththi enne. Varan hondha graduate kenek, varadu first class okkuma tibila, varadu vedhi aurudhgaanak, saukya sampannelasi jivaththi enne beruvunath, it will cost you. It will cost you, dekane meh aarogya paramadanang kila kian, haridu ekka hetvath tiena. So you are lucky here, we have free health system but, but still it's a cost, right? To someone, it will be a cost. And try to manage your expenses, try to have an Excel sheet. Excel sheet tekku alake expenses meh daagannu puligam, etukuthu varadu balannu puligam, mang munadu vedim vedankarlatina, munadu velatina. Eva game then meh meh mang poli dhaharnen dalthi, etukuthu you can manage it well as management studentsna, management noonaayath tienapuligam edanai. But Excel kene echchira lokku amaru ikakname, varadu nikang polammekvi, roeekvi daagana, nikang samme karagana, balannu puligam, munadu expensesyannai, incomemekkoomu the, enne ekka balance karagana, lesi ethukuthu varadu. And students, one of the most important thing is how to market yourself. Because in the modern world, this is a must. Kene electronic footprint ekkane, then varagian, itanugav, then varag graduate la, varajobdekkada apply karapuham. They will definitely search you in LinkedIn, Facebook, Twitter, hari Instagram, hari anivare, namagahalabala. Mukkuda ethaning yaladu basic vaage penuma haribalaagannu puligam, basic understanding ekka haribalaaganna. They will just search you, what you have done, who are your mutual friends, what are your interests, varadu previous exam, then LinkedIn ekadu himgiyotha, varadu working experience kanna puligam. They can see your network, recommendations, okkuma ethaning kanna. Facebookgyoththam, varadu kaudu inna mutual friendsla, varasakarunadevala, ekane var, dhanavala, like karavat, pageya. Ekka varagin interestala about yahama etika pennun. You can block, you can just privacy block kala hemath tienapuligam. But somehow they can see, varagin nama Google kala velvath, varadu sambandhi electronic footprint okkuma enam. Got it? So try to build the good social media platform for you, meh hemaykama hariyera hondatu use karana, habei, yeah, ekane, not just for cheap publicity. Ekane hondadheekadu use karan, vedagath deekadu, hondaddeekadu use karana. And this will be very important in the twenty-first century. Make a maker, then something, if you are doing marketing lamai, if you are doing marketing as a subject, you will get digital marketing or electronic marketing as well as social media marketing as a separate subject. Are they a separate subject app in neb, you can study yourself if you are from different departments or faculties, you can study yourself and understand what is this concept. Then why, why we should do extracurricular activities with your studies? This is known as KSM model and this was introduced by the UGC. UGC kene mukthakila dananane, the university council commission, varalay okkumala eepotha puruvalanu university avilaiyini. Iti UGC ekema kila tienava, hem university state, ekane UGC atati tiena, universities dahatati tiena, ee dahatema, kattiyattu, minna meh etika dienunore, kila thama yala expect karan. Ethukuthu okkuma curriculants, hadenunore meh modellekaanu. Now look at here, the knowledge will be having only two aspects. Subject theoretical knowledge and practical knowledge and the application. Thodu knowledge keneka thama meh lectures, tutorials, practical, self-learning, vade minna knowledge kene componentteka, kene danuma. Keneka, denda minna mechchrai tienne. But look at this skills, attitude and mindset will have a vast area. Ethukuthu lamai, api academic pidhak focus kala, varadu GPA ka three point nine nine harith fourthibath. What are skills, attitude and the mindset atham, you will not be a successful graduate even according to the UGC. UGC ekama kene, arah knowledge ekidra, thibla harianai, isam meh eti okkuma testendu. Ethukuthu UGC kana kianai, meh GPA king, minna meh okkuma testendu nekila. That's why you will be having group presentations, assignments, role plays, ee okkuma tienne. Anne ee skills develop karan, teamwork, leadership, creativity. But students, if you do extracurricular activities, this will become a total package. Meh communication, leadership, teamwork, creativity, meh okkuma otoma kavavenu, got it? So when you are going to a job interview, graduate nehondra rasaavakandari, thodu job interview kadi gihama, varadu dennekinnuva, ekkana to first class atthi noni, tekkana to second upper ekattina. But the person with the second upper has done many extracurricular activities and he is good in communication, good in personality, good in attitudes and his mindset is very powerful. Ethukuthu first class atthi, but interviewke select karagana, priorityka ekane, vedhi possibilityka atthi enne, the second person with the second class and more extracurricular activities, got it? So make sure, habei mehemakattina, varnikang degree, nikang pass, vela, extrakarigulu, gudak, tipbadat. Ekka priorityka kendi vidiyakuthna, because they will think that, va university ekaraavila, ikkana kani, na tuvenamunadu kari. Ethu revenamunhari karupuke, then measure karanna amaru ini. Now, if you have done things for society or the university or whatever, the measurement criteria is very subjective, ekane GPA ka denne, next extracurricular activities karakila. But academics that they have class and class sekkara criteria hathine, it can be quantified. Thodu ekka poli, poli sinnath tiena edan, ekka maninapuligam. Ekai that's why every time class sekkak matters kian ekai. Thukuthu then meh, now you are very lucky to have a faculty that everyone can get an ekkana concepte kina. Now I will give you an example, in Peradeni University Agriculture Faculty, yadha hemortama ekka gandu puligam systeme annavetien. Because they are giving grades according to a normal distribution. Ekane monokochra, hemal amayata, manuvata vedhiyati, but batchke CN dhayakada decide karuna, ee denne kila, ee dhayakada itara khambeen, normal distribution vara dananuva, himangetanuva. Ekane mehama mettina daala, methina normal distributionneka. Thodu mettining meh ninety-five levelleke, ehata innalamaiti kada vitrai, ee denne kila kiena. Even though the average is above eighty kilagannu, anu pahat vedip dhahadenadu vitrai, ee din. Hema grading systemsu, lokket tiena, nankavet tiena university sala. So you are lucky in our all faculties in Dhawarthenapur, they are following the grading system. Ekane varata hatayavakata udintibbu, ekka gannapuligam, it might differ from other faculties, but management faculties seventy. Ethukuthu meh hatavahana attavadi nangi, hatavahata vedinang, emai likewise, you can have a grading system. So that is why you should do extracurricular activities. And when you are at the university, try to increase all four type of intelligence. The first one is intelligence quotient, IQ kila kian, IQ kaameyaka, IQ mechchira, issara measure karana, IQ ka, albaista, Einstein ki IQ kekka, sihataga. Karu, varid, it can go up to two hundred as thermite knowledge, IQ ka measure karanu puligam, two hundred, thakke, ekka test tiena. And the IQ knowledge, we are measuring at the university, it's the GPA, grade point average, cumulative grade point average, can puligam, CGP kila kienavi. Ekadama aga IQ measure karame. Habei, you know emotional quotient kene, emotional kene, you can be empathetic. That means you can go to other shoes and when you are making a decision, varanitthayakana, thitalakama decisionagannu. And you will be humble, genuine and you have the integrity, okay? Likewise, that is emotional quotient. But and there is another one called social quotient. Social quotient kene, having a good network, societal network within yourself, that means the network matters lamai. Kene, if you are in a faculty, as an example, if you are in the management faculty, you might know friends from other faculties also. Because someday you will need that network, got it? Ekane netta katthi netta, onekene katakaranu puligam, edunene, mukakari dhannedhati nana, agin katakalaha, puligam edunene. As an example, now since I have lot of friends from the medical faculty during this pandemic, I can get lot of advice from them. Koliyadunagang, macham mehama kattina, mukaddakaranunene, mehama vaccine. Now even today, I took boost and I am not feeling well, even though I am doing it. I slept for around six hours now at the evening and I am not feeling well. But I can get that, I called one of my friend and I got some advices. Now I am a bit okay, so likewise, you should have a network. Try to build an, as I told you, mehavitanugav, var kohari dhanneki palavatade dhiam, varagay yaluukittiyot, ee palathe, you can just call him and ask. Macham mehama, mamme pathreeno, kohedi indha tiena thanthi, unadu balandha tiena thanthi, I think you have practically experienced this. And the next one is adversity quotient, ekane during your university life or during your life, you will face rough patches. Ekane varadu, monhari prashnathithi, ekane prashnathithi, jeevi thamelo keenai, mukakari prashnakkena, kuchara sali tipputhgalek, kuvad, kuchara reputationne, kharistatesari, monathipputgalek, thunath. Prashnakkena, mukakari prashnakthi nana, kaatunath tienai, keting, etu thama mehloke sobavu. Ethukuthu ee prashnaking, face kala, ekking, udhataavilla, duruvanavu, keneka thama meh adversity quotient kian. Ethukuthu var university kithdi, varagay IQ, EQ, SQ, AQ kene.